I need a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing, accessory dwelling special permit for thirty-seven Otis Road. The applicants are Charles Waltz and Jaclyn Boudreaux. I think we have a letter requesting an immediate continuance.
We do, and we have any questions?
Okay.
Okay. There is a letter here, so I move to accept the applicant's request for continuance of the accessory dwelling special permit, public hearing for thirty-seven Otis Road until September twelfth, two thousand thirteen, at nine P M.
Discussion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
They are moved to September twelfth?
Yep.
Oh, wait, Greg, let's do accounting?
No, no accounting.
You guys were very efficient.
No fun today.
We are extremely proficient.
We tried to come up with some, you know.
Ice cream brick.
Town, town, there is a town planner report, because I read it online.
If I, if I needed to fill up the next four hours, I could ask about the FEMA maps.
Oh, yeah. Actually, the meeting they had in Dennis went for five hours.
I can imagine.
Five hours. They had Dennis, Harwich, Chatham, and Brewster all in one meeting, but still.
Yeah.
So.
You probably have a lot more than five hundred homes affected, huh? I would assume.
Yeah. The planner in Dennis calculated thirty-eight hundred, but some of those are condos that, you know, that condo isn't really going to be affected that much, because it's just a little unit in, like, maybe a converted motel or something, so.
Still be affected on its insurance, though.
Yeah, it'll be affected somewhat.
The condo we had on Surfside, we were paying almost eighteen hundred dollars in flood insurance by the time we left.
Wow.
So, I, I think that's, that was a freestanding house. It just happened to be a condo, so it's probably less for what you're talking about. But it's substantial money for the people who were all of a sudden affected by this and weren't previously. So, I can understand why there'd be some outcry.
And in that particular area, they also have a sewer betterment as well, because of the...
Yes.
So, you're, I can imagine that they're getting hit with the FEMA flood map, the new floodplain map, and the sewer.
Right.
So, there's going to be a whole separate set of maps down at the library, and there's, there's a web blast, or it's actually kind of a notice on the website that has links to the maps, if you want to look up your house and see if anything happened to it. You're safe, because you're, I know you're safe.
I'm looking up yours, Bill, are you?
I'm not sure about other people.
I wasn't before, but I'm likely to be this time.
I think you might be, because I did look up in general some information. I know it went from ten to sixteen, which is a considerable change.
Yeah.
At least along Athely Road in our area, in the area that I was in.
Yep.
We'll see what happens.
There's also information on the website about some bills pending in Congress to reform the Flood Insurance Reform Act, which changed all the grandfathering and reduced it, so that people have to pay more, in addition to the remapping. So, you know, so we'll just have to see what happens with that. And I guess people can write their congressman, you know, can write Stephen Lynch if they, you know, if they feel strongly. Maybe the selectman will, you know, write to him, you know, maybe some towns will get together and, you know, try to make some kind of a, an effort.
The, it's supposed to go into effect October fifteenth. Is that right?
It's, the maps, well, that's when the bigger waters goes into effect, but the maps are going to go into effect next June.
Okay, so when, when would this kick in, a need for insurance, if, or changing your insurance, if you needed to? Would that be October fifteenth?
Next, next June. No, if you're, well, if you're not in a zone, you know, in a flood zone now...
Yep.
You, you won't get into a flood zone until next June, so it would probably be whenever your, you know, your mortgage company or your bank finds out after that.
I see. For some reason, I thought it was that more imminent than that. So, that's good.
They're saying that people that are not in the flood zone now, that are going to get into the flood zone, should buy the lower-cost flood insurance now, in case there's a chance they can get grandfathered. So, it sounds a little convoluted, but it's one of those things that might work. So, that's one of my, one of my items. Another item is on eighty-seven Maple Street, the property where I brought in the pictures showing the clearing and so on. Greg Morse actually was involved, because he was working for the owner of the property, and on the plans that he did, it turned out that a small wetland had been filled, and also that eleven thousand square feet of conservation land, land that's owned by the town for conservation purposes, had been stripped and asphalted. So, this is a huge, huge thing, and, well, it, not asphalt, but it's got the, it's got the crush, you know, a lot of crusher run and, and, you know, like a ground-up asphalt material on the top of it, so.
Parcel weigh-in off of Maple Street.
Greg wants to weigh in on this.
You can pass it down for us.
Greg wants to add something?
Could I just clarify? All my work was post everything, but it was not prior.
Wasn't your idea.
It was not my idea.
So, the other thing I want to update everyone on is Fifty Country Way, the, the project that Chris Ford has been working on, thirty condos with a mixed use, and then they're bringing the older building up to the front on, on Country Way, down in Green Bush. They are probably going to be coming in to the planning board in the middle of September, and they are going to design review Sep-, August, is it twenty?
August twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. So, if anybody's interested in being part of that discussion on the design, that's when that'll be, so.
Mike's still a member until we replace him?
Until you replace him. Yeah. Do you want to talk about that at all, or?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay.
August twenty-eighth, right?
Yeah. Yep, right in our offices.
Liaison reports?
Oh.
Got anything on the liaison reports?
That's for me, thank you.
If I can report on the public facility report, we gave a report to the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, indicating where we were, what we'd found in terms of all of our, the tours of all of the buildings and the structures, and came back with, met with them, and we're going to continue to meet with, doing some additional work in terms of looking at some, the funding and costs associated with some of the various options. We're going to continue to do that and meet again with the Board of Selectmen, and what was it? I think the end of, end of the year, October, October timeframe. For those of you that like to watch cable, it should be on cable. Sure.
Well, I have a liaison report.
Okay.
Heritage Days was, as always, very well put together. My hats off to the Chamber of Congress and the Harbor Association, I think would help, which helps out, right, the Merchants Association, so, very, very well done.
That went down on Saturday. Walked around, I bought my annual Situate sweatshirt. They seem to last about a year, so I buy one for a year, and then I, I replace it in the next August. It is now seven forty-five. We have Border Street here?
Yes.
Okay. At seven forty-five, we have a public hearing for Scenic Road, public hearing, sixty-one Border Street. The applicant is Kirsten Lilly.
Kirsten Lilly.
Kirsten, okay.
All right.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
So, we submitted this, you know, the application.
Yep.
Kevin Grady was the engineer. Here, submitted this plan as well, that you can see. It has the layout where the driveway is, the stone wall that is there now. It's in high disrepair, the stone wall, and there's also a section there, which you can see in the center where it says nineteen, there's supposed to be a little dash there, feet of stone wall to be built to replace, stone wall removal, is where there really is no more stone wall. It's just what I would consider a foundation. So, if you dug away the, the leaves, you'd see just where a foundation, where a wall used to be. Where we're asking for removal of that portion of the stone wall, so that we can put our driveway, and so, over there on the far side, if you looked on the plan, it says sixteen feet of stone wall to be removed for driveway entrance. Then, there's a portion, right where it says, where I just pointed out, the nineteen feet of stone wall to be built to replace what we're removing, there'd be another little gap that we would put there, so that we could put a picket fence, you know, the classic stone wall with the fence that goes right to you with this, with a walkway that goes to your front door. And then, we would continue with new stone wall. All this would be new stone wall, because as I said, it's rubble, would be the rest of the property line to our, you know, from boundary line to boundary line. There are no trees for removal, because there aren't any that are within the layout of, like, out of the, the twenty-foot from the center out, so there are no trees that are going to be taken down in that area. We'd prefer to have some trees. There aren't a lot that are on that stretch. There is a cedar tree that's in the corner here, that's right, sort of in, it's hard to see. It's right on the boundary line. I don't know if it's my neighbor's tree, or if it's ours. It could be right down the middle of the tree. And that had some damage to it from the storm. It was, you know, the top was broken off. I don't see anything going on with that tree, other than if it died by itself. I think it won't be a problem for us pulling out of the driveway. If it was, I guess we would talk to someone about safety if we couldn't have... But that's the only tree that I could see being a problem, but we haven't asked to have it removed or anything.
Good.
Okay.
Laura?
Yeah, you know, really, no comments. It's great that the nineteen feet is being replaced. I think that's, that's always a good thing. I think the board has, has wanted to see that happen in the past, to kind of keep these historic stone walls around, around the community.
Questions from the board?
What, what kind of stone wall, again? Is it, I mean, because it's just a foundation right now, you're building it up. I mean, is it just like a...
Border Street is known for what I would consider that really nice farmer's drywall. You know, it's a thick, it would, if you look down Border Street, I've lived on Border Street for twenty-eight years, so I would want to go with the flavor of what it is, so that there would be a continuity.
Is it the horizontal sort of layout, or is it, is it field stones that's rounded?
It's field stone, a field stone, stone wall that you see in really old stone walls.
Some magician put it all together.
Yeah. Talented mason.
Yes.
It's, it's the round stones, right?
Yeah.
It's the old-fashioned.
Just what you see on all the old roads.
First Parish Road has them, Country Way has them.
It's a dry stack wall, though.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
We have a motion?
Yep, we do.
How convenient. I even brought in the stormwater calculations, but I guess we don't need that. Okay. I move to close the Scenic Road Act public hearing, and to approve the application for removal of approximately sixteen feet of linear stone wall, in connection with the construction of a proposed driveway, and three linear feet of stone wall for a walkway and gate for a new single-family home at sixty-one Border Street, assessors parcel six dash two dash B, for applicant Kristen Lilly and Michael Kenny. The stones will be reused to build nineteen feet of stone wall along the northern edge of the Border Street property line, as shown on plan entitled, Scenic Road Plan, sixty-one Border Street, Situate, Mass., by Grady Consulting, L L C., dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Wish they were all that easy.
You have a few minutes tonight.
Do you guys remember this? I was, like, looking through my stuff, and I'm like, wow.
Oh, yeah, that's in the back of my car. And I almost brought it in, too.
So, you get traction in order?
I really, I gotta, gotta go through that stuff. Well, you said the same thing, right?
If I have to stop quick, I disarrange everything. I got CPC gets mixed up with, with planning board. There's a real problem. We are currently waiting until eight o'clock, so the next continuation of three oh five Country Way.
You want to talk about lot shape factor?
Do you have any accounting issues to be done?
We don't want to talk about that yet.
Accounting about what?
Lot shape factor?
No.
Okay.
I propose we take a ten-minute break.
I, I have a, I have a general question. Is there a, or are there, are there zoning issues that we're going to bring up at the Fall Town Meeting? I mean, are we going to re-bring the issue, the issue about accessory dwellings, for example? Is that the plan still?
Well, we have the medical marijuana.
And the metal.
That Eric and myself and Laura have been working on.
Okay.
Mostly Laura.
Would, would, would anyone care to say a few words about where we stand on that?
I don't know, should we?
Well, they haven't seen, well, you have seen my draft.
Yeah.
Haven't gotten all the way through it yet.
I just was looking at it now. I don't know if you had a chance.
I've not had much of a chance.
We're, we're definitely going to bring that in, probably the next meeting.
Okay. But I won't, you know.
We can discuss it now, if you feel comfortable, Eric.
I'm happy to.
Try and wring it out of you. I was just kind of curious.
Well, we might change it based on some things that Laura had said, but what we were thinking about was, when we looked at the zoning map, looking for, there's, there's the actual cultivation. There's three things, right? Cultivation, the actual sort of distribution.
Marketing, and then the preparation.
Yeah, preparation, and then the, the point of sale, if you will. Right, what do they call that?
Dispensary. Yeah, I think just the sale.
Dispensary.
Yeah, dispensary. So, we had preliminary looked at for the two of those things to be just in a commercial, the, the commercial zone of Situate, which...
Which is basically...
Which is basically Green Bush.
Situate concrete pipe and the landfill and a couple of, it's not very big, right?
It's encompassing the Driftway area.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
With the restriction of, of course, being back a certain distance from any kind of childcare facility, schools, those kinds of things. So, it would encompass, basically, like you said, Situate concrete pipe, the actual golf course, the parcel that would be along the Driftway, that was going to be where the, the Marines Center was, could possibly be. Also, the Herring Cove, or Herring Brook Mall, the South Shore Auto Parts.
Medical office building there now.
I'm sorry?
The doc, the doctor's office building.
Yes, yeah. So, basically that. And then, we had looked at, you know, there are, I believe, what, three or four other zones that are considered to be business, which is the harbor, a little tiny section up on three A, by the Cohasset Line, North Situate, another little tiny section that is in Hummerock, I believe, right? And Green Bush, because there are certain areas that are, that are business, but are not commercial. And so, we thought about that being the actual, that we could allow dispensaries there. But then, you had some comments on maybe splitting that apart, or not splitting it apart. Maybe that wasn't a good idea.
Well, after we met, I talked to the planner from Westboro, and they just adopted a bylaw, and he was influenced pretty strongly by the Sixty Minutes presentation on medical marijuana. And when you look at it, it's just extremely commercial, sort of high-pressure sales feeling about it. And, you know, maybe you really want to contain that more, when, when you see that. But, I mean, I think it's, I think, I hope you all look at the Sixty Minutes. I have the link to it, so you can just...
Oh, good.
Get in there and see it. But it's, it's something to think about, and then it's, it is, I think you had talked about how it's a all cash business, because you can't use checks that are, you know, from a bank that's part of the F D I C, because, you know, I mean, I guess because of legal issues.
Federally, not sanctioned.
So, so there's all this cash around, so you don't necessarily want it where there are a lot of people coming and going, and businesses, and so on. So, there, there are a lot of kind of really unique issues to it.
Yeah.
Well, and I think we were going back and forth, because one of the things we were balancing, you know, it makes sense in the commercial zone, but at the same time, the commercial zoning does have, I mean, that particular area has got the, the transfer station, it's got the, the windmill, the solar array on top of the landfill, the train, you know? And so, by, we thought by allowing the dispensaries in the other business districts, you're potentially softening that blow, oh, I shouldn't say blow, but it's softening...
We're reducing the NIMBY argument.
Yeah, exactly. That we're not just saying, oh, this is where it all, everything goes in Green Bush, right? That it is allowed in other districts.
The other thing we talked about is that regardless of what the application is or where it's going to be, we want it to make it a special use requiring a permit.
Yes.
So, so that we'd have at least some element of individual oversight on a case-by-case basis.
And it would be okay to do that, Laura?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, um, Westboro had done that. That didn't get kicked out. What are some of the other issues?
Yeah, I think, I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, if you look at our, you know, the current zoning, and basically what Laura added to it, like, you see all the, what's allowed in the commercial district, what's allowed in the business district, and, you know, each of these, and whether it is a special permit or not.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's kind of what our thinking was.
No, that's, that's...
So, I guess right now, I would say we're either waffling between allowing the, the point of sale in the business, or maybe having it completely encompassed within the commercial zone of what we have in, is just one commercial zone in Situate.
One of the things that, that Jim, you know, my counterpart in Westboro, recommended, which I think Eric had also recommended pretty strongly, was talking with the Economic Development Committee, and maybe also the President of the Chamber, and see if they had a handle on how businesses would, would feel about it.
Right.
I mean, you might have other businesses not want it close to them, or there might be landlords that are trying to fill a building that might, you know, be looking for it. So, it could go, you know, a lot of different ways.
And I assume we'll be bringing the public safety people into this as well.
Yep.
Yeah, our, our thought was first, was, well, we mullet between this subcommittee, right? We, then we present it to the planning board, we have a discussion like this, and then if we're all on board with what we decide to do, then we start sort of shopping it around, if you will. And I think Eric had the idea to have, bring all the, the different heads of state that would, that would have interest.
Heads of constituencies.
Yeah, and there are, there are, so, the police department is an obvious one, so is fire.
Yep.
School.
Schools.
Superintendent.
We would like to talk to some, some representatives of the local medical community and see what they, what they think, and so forth.
Yep.
You know, we were concerned about the, it's not really a planning issue, per se, but it does affect our planning decisions, and that's the, the heavily regulated nature of these operations, the, the kind of security that they have to have in place.
Who mandates, or who is telling them what level of security they have to have in place?
Department of Public Health, do I remember that right?
Yeah.
Department of Public Health.
Regulations.
Yeah, and it's, so they, you know, they have to comply with, they got to keep track of the cash. They have to, they also have to test all the, the product that they're growing. They have to certify that it's organic and not using any unimproved pesticides. The entire operation has to be inside locked doors. They have to keep track of, of their customers, and they have to have high security for that. They have to have a, a place for training. So, if you come in and say, I need this, they'll take you in a room and say, okay, this is how you do it. And so, there's, you know, there'll be lots of people involved, and, you know, potentially, there'll be issues of traffic related to that, because you're going to have to be able to transport this stuff in a secure transporter, I guess for lack of a better word.
Like a Brink's truck.
Yeah.
Something along those lines. And then, then if you have dispensaries in other parts of town, they're, they're going to have the same regulations they're going to have to comply with. So, so obviously, traffic, Department of Public, the people responsible for the roads, and everybody that doesn't want it in their backyard.
But I think one of the things that we came to conclusion is that, you know, the regulations currently from the D P W, or Department, sorry, D P W, Department of Health, were so comprehensive, that we didn't want to overcomplicate it by adding more regulations. It was just easier to say, as Eric mentioned, was, you know, zone it for a particular area, have some zones that say, setback for certain conditions, like, you know, childcare facilities, and then make it a special permit.
And then refer everything else back to the regulations that are already in place.
Exactly. And so that, try to keep it as fairly simple as possible.
Right.
And not reinvent the wheel.
Right. So, that's kind of where we're at right now.
In terms of the accessory dwelling issue, I would like to see us address that again as quickly as we can, and, and learn from our mistakes.
Is that something that maybe we should put on the agenda?
Um, sure. I mean, I think personally, the main, one of the main hurdles that had was, it just got so complicated, it was hard for people to, you know, kind of get their minds around the whole thing, so.
Said, learn from our mistakes.
Yeah, yeah, well.
And I think one of the things was said, that what was the original text? What is the amended text? That should be pretty easy to do. And then, I believe there was the sticking point about the actual percentage, or, or no, no greater than, there was a percentage...
Well, the size was basically, one way or another.
So, I think we could tweak those numbers a bit, to make it maybe more palatable, so that if you did have a larger building, or a larger structure, you could maybe potentially get a larger accessory dwelling unit.
It begins to look a lot like the things we've discussed in the past about footprint issues. You know, how big of a building you can build on, on the footprint.
Right, the F A R.
Yeah.
That's, that's even more complicated and kind of invasive. You've really got to be careful with that.
I'm, I'm thinking, though, that if you, you're sort of in for a penny, in for a pound.
Right.
You're going to resolve one, and by, by default, resolve the other at the same time.
Possibly.
But wasn't there, like, if I, I don't remember the exact regulations, but didn't Dan have something like, it was nine hundred and fifty, or the certain percentage, whichever is greater? So, like, you could maybe...
Whichever is smaller.
Or smaller, yeah.
That was one of the subsequent points.
Yeah, so maybe that could be, like, whichever is greater, or something.
We need, we need to...
That's what we have now.
Yeah, that's, that's not going to work.
That's the confusing part now.
It seems to me, one, one persuasive point that wasn't made clearly enough is a, is a very, you know, straightforward comparison with what we're asking to do with what the towns around us have allowed and, and is already in place. And it's my recollection that we are more lenient in this regard than almost any other town in the area.
I think, too, the, you know, the argument that comparing ourselves to what the other towns do may not carry a lot of weight, because all the other towns could be wrong. And so, I'm thinking that we...
I would think they could all be wrong.
But I'm, I'm thinking we, we should talk maybe as well about what it is that we're looking to accomplish, and what it will look like, and how it will benefit the, the neighborhoods and so forth.
Yeah, if it can be put, put simply enough to be comprehended in five minutes in, in the high school gymnasium.
Maybe we need a picture.
All right. Okay, enough of that. I think we're here.
Your timing is superb. It is now eight o'clock. The next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing to flexible open space and Scenic Road hearing for three oh five Country Way. While you're getting set up, Greg, let me make a couple of comments. Tonight, we're continuing the public hearing for the flexible open space special permit, definitive subdivision plan, a Scenic Road public shade tree hearing from seven twenty-five. Just to remind everybody, the voting members will be, everybody except for Bob Green. It's the same group that's, has voted so far on all of them. On seven twenty-five, we voted to approve the conventional density sketch plan, and we approved three lots for density for the flexible open space, the definitive subdivision stage. But since the last meeting, there's been additional correspondence from Butters. In addition to questions, it's apparent to me that there seems to be some misunderstanding regarding the process, the applicable bylaws, when variants or special permits are needed. And what I want to do is, is to talk to that tonight, and hopefully, we can address that. And we come to a singular point of understanding. To get there, what we'll do is we'll start by reviewing the letter received from Mr. Costello and Van Linton, and when this is done, we'll continue with the discussion on the flexible open space plan. the flexible open space plan. What I'd like to do is ask Laura to summarize the requirements for approving the flexible open space subdivision plan, and then we'll go into, discuss the various letters. We'll have the letter presented, then we'll have the applicant address it, then we'll have our engineer address it, and then the planner address it. Having said all that, once that's done, then we'll continue on with the flexible open space. The first item on the agenda is, Laura, if you would, just kind of just give us an overview of the bylaw.
Sure, just to recap some of the main points of this flexible open space bylaw, this is a special type of development that allows construction on smaller lots than you would ordinarily have under the zoning bylaw on a restricted part of the parcel. The overall density has to be at the same level that's allowed under zoning and subdivision regulations. The trade-off for the town of allowing this is that open space can be permanently preserved, and sometimes special features on the property can be preserved as well. This type of development typically results in lower costs for the applicant, the roads and utilities are shorter, there's less clearing required, and the development costs are usually lower. The trade-off for the developer is that they have to provide a public benefit that benefits the town. And the intent in this bylaw is that that benefit has something to do with preserving the historic, cultural, and natural features of the site. There are a few other features of this bylaw, the drainage should be low-impact whenever feasible, is the term that they use, so that rather than a stormwater basin, generally speaking, you would want to have a system of smaller connected swales and rain gardens and other types of infiltration that are, you know, less impact on the land and, you know, the overall development than a stormwater basin. The way the process works is the conventional density plan is approved first, and that really just sets the maximum density. The flexible open space development is a special permit process where many conditions are typical, it's a four out of five vote that's required, and the planning board has to determine that the development meets the requirements of the bylaw, including the public benefit piece before the development is approved. The board must make a finding that the flexible open space development is superior to a conventional subdivision, and they also must identify those public benefits that I've been talking about, consistent with the purpose of the bylaw, which are this expression of the desire to preserve natural and cultural resources, and they have to describe the benefits in, you know, you have to describe the benefits in your findings. The overview.
You want to talk about what's required for the conventional subdivision in terms of its requirements to meet zoning?
Sure. The conventional plan is really separate from the actual plan that's being approved, and what the conventional plan does is it sets this maximum density based on the current zoning and the current subdivision regulations. So the analysis of that plan has to take into account whether the plan does in fact meet the zoning and the subdivision regulations.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Since we're called fifty-two Elm Street. Has this been ever approved, fewer homes after approving the maximum number in the conventional plan? Has anyone ever been part of the process of that?
I mean, in the flexible open space plan?
Right, in the flexible open space, has ever fewer homes been approved after a conventional plan?
Best my knowledge, no. Anything else? Mr. Crussell, you want to present your letter?
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
I think you've got, like, six major, major questions or observations that you need, that you would have to address, so why don't you, if you could summarize those, that would be good.
The first one, the planning board does have a discretionary ability, flexibility to deny a three-house project according to the zoning, spread by limits and variances. They are very discretionary. A conventional plan is part of this special permit. The planning board has discretionary ability to deny the plan that it could impact water resources. Water resources can be voted against the three-house plan, and maybe it should be brought in on any decision. A variance is needed from the zoning bylaw language, special terms discretionary. The slope exceeds 25 percent, this needs to be filled. The drainage, the bottom of the drainage ditch modeling shows a forty-two inches, which does not exceed the maximum ground loss level, since the bottom of the basin is one foot below pre-construction grade, is less than three feet from maximum ground elevation. A variance on the zoning board, if you needed, on that. A building permit is needed according to the Mass Building Code seven eighty CMR. A retaining wall that holds more than four feet fill, just the one discussion, the maximum is at four feet above ground level, and no closer than thirty feet from any block line except for necessary, say, blocks of street or pipeline. This is just, we haven't talked about that a lot. Slopes along the western edge of the development will direct stormwater into a non-disturbant zone, and it says that in a non-disturbant buffer zone, any surface or subsurface discharge, including not limited to stormwater runoff. Stormwater from the road and the driveways is being captured and sent away from the tributary in its order in wetland ecology. This will impact the areas that naturally recharge the wetlands and tributaries. The retaining wall is intercepting groundwater and will alter flow away from the recharged areas. The actual edge of the tributary must be determined, comply with the water resources by law by twenty point five. This tributary has never been surveyed, the state has said there's a tributary, but it is up to the town to determine where the limits of the stream are. The professional height of a geologist should determine the edge of the tributary in order to properly establish the location of the non-disturbant buffer zone. Planning board members were told that the conventional plan complies with some rules and regulations, therefore they have no discretionary flexibility to deny a three-house plan. Clearly, this is not true for all the above reasons. The main point, a three-house project is bad for the sensitive area. The planning board does have discretionary ability to deny a three-house plan, and finally, other departments and boards have to use and approve the issue to comply with some of the ability from this. Most things should be done before the planning board votes on the conventional plan.
Good. Okay, thank you for summary, thank you for taking the time to write the letter. I guess a procedural question, and I guess I'll ask the two engineers, they're going to respond to it, is you want to address each individually, or you want to address, because you think it's better to address it in its entirety?
Could I, could I interject? Could we just take one at a time and get everything kind of good the next?
Of course.
Otherwise, I think we're going back and forth.
Back where we were?
Yeah.
Let's start with the non-compliance with the intent of the W, and I'll read from the letter, the WRPD bylaw five twenty dot four, section C. According to the Water Resource Protection District bylaw, the planning board has discretionary ability to decide if a project meets the intent of the bylaw. Certainly building three houses on the site that drains into tributaries and our water supply does not serve the best interests of the community. I guess, Trager Gate, you want to address it first?
Sure. That section of the bylaw that Mr. Crussell states, section five twenty point four, section C, has to do with enacting the planning board as the special permit granting authority for any special permits within the Water Resource Protection District. A single-family subdivision is not a special permit, as listed under the bylaw, a special permit is not required for this development, therefore section C is not applicable.
Okay, I guess, John, we're over.
I think it's the same way, and there's, there's like, three things that require a special permit, golf course, I don't have anything right in front of me, but listed them out, I don't believe this was a special permit requirement for a family.
I have the three special permit requirements here, if you'd like me to read them.
No, I think we're outside.
Okay.
So what we're saying is, is that, that it's, the point is invalid, because it refers to a section requiring a special permit, and that this does, the application in front of us does not. Questions to the board?
No, I think that's pretty clear.
Okay. Next item is non-compliance with review process stated in WRPD bylaw five twenty dot four, section C. The bylaw states that a decision could impact, that it could impact a sensitive part of the watershed should be made in conjunction with other reviewing boards, including the Water Resource Committee. The Water Resource Committee is against the three-house subdivision on its lot, and requests that the two-house project be proposed. Reason for the decision should be discussed more thoroughly before making a final decision. This one will change the rules, we'll then, we will talk to the chairman of the Water Resource Committee. John, do you have any comments you want to connect?
We reviewed the plans, we reviewed a number of series of plans, and I attended one meeting, not the last hearing, but the hearing before, and I did not attend the last game, forgive me for that, but I did watch the tape, entertaining myself on a Saturday morning, and I saw what the planning board did, struggling with the issue on two versus three houses, and I appreciate the consideration that was given. But the opinion of the Water Resources Committee is that three houses is just too much for this site. The letter you've received, I think, outlines a number of items that we concurred with on the, in our review, particularly the impact of stormwater. I will say that I was most interested by Laura's introduction tonight, where she talked about the compelling need to identify the additional public benefit from the flexible open space plan. We have heard that through this plan, how much land will be provided for open space? That land would be provided for as open space, protected as open space anyway, because it's in a non-disturb zone. So this is not a particular benefit that the project is bringing to the town of Situate. The Water Resources Committee's responsibility is to protect the water assets of the community. There is a tributary which feeds our water system, and we do not believe that a three-house project as proposed serves the interest of the community in protecting the drinking water supplies.
Are there any, I guess, no, we'll go to Greg and see what Greg's answered.
I have more, but I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, let him, no, 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 let him go with that, and then it gives me a chance to reload the brain cells.
So I, I guess, you know, upon, upon hearing the opinions, as he puts it, of the Water Resource Committee, what I have in front of you here on this chart to my left are hard numbers, these are factual numbers, scientific base, that demonstrate the benefits of a flexible open space development. I can run through all of that with you right now. If you look at the numbers here, with a conventional development on the site, you're going to alter approximately a hundred thousand square feet of land. With a flexible open space, you're going to develop eighty-four thousand square feet. So you're reducing the land disturbance by sixteen thousand within the water resource.
Would you mind if I interrupt it? I, I just think this is something we need to get to, but it doesn't really, it's not direct to the point that we had here, which, which is this non-compliance with the bylaw five twenty point four. It seems to me that if five twenty point four doesn't apply to the first statement, it doesn't apply to the second statement either, and that we should just move through this, and then move into a broader discussion, and we'll give John a chance to reload the brain cells at that point, too.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay, so, what we're suggesting, there's, not, we're suggesting, we're saying is that if five twenty dot four, section C, didn't apply, that the previous one, it doesn't apply at this point. The next item in the letter is a variance from the WRPD bylaw five twenty dot six, section F dot two, is needed from the zoning board, CBA. This is a natural slope, twenty-five percent will be filled, which is a violation of the bylaw. A two-home development, this natural slope could be incorporated into a greenscape stormwater control component.
And if I could speak, I think this more closely addresses the stormwater issue as well, with the directing the stormwater and changing the slope.
If I may, I'll locate that slope that they're referring to, the existing condition sheet here of the plan site. The location of the slope that exceeds twenty-five percent in its existing condition is right here, and you'll notice that it's a very small area. The area itself is only about ten feet wide, it's maybe twenty or thirty feet long, okay? So we're not talking about a very large area. And what you'll notice is that it's directly at the edge of the existing lawn for the house that was out there. I walked the site today with Laura, I think that she will be in agreement, that there are no significant trees out of it, there's no trees there with significant vegetation or established root systems. The ground surface over that location where we have the slope, there were rocks sticking up out of the ground there, which tells me that that land was altered at some point, it was tilled, it was filled, something there has been altered. The point I'm getting at is that the bylaw protects natural slopes. And if we look at the remainder of the site, aside from this yellow area that I just highlighted, none of the slopes, and you'll see all the contours here, are fairly uniform in their spacing. This one location at the edge of the lawn, where the lawn was constructed and terraced and built up, is not a natural slope. Furthermore, are we filling over with our proposed development? Yes, we are. It does not change the drainage pattern, the drainage is still directed in the same direction post-development. It's not a protected slope under the bylaw.
We'll get to it in a minute, we're going to hear from John.
I can't say whether it's natural or not, that was up there several months ago. I did look at the plan, I found the area, I think there's also an area probably under where the barn was, and I would say that would not be natural, because the barn, I basically, I drive in front and walk out back. But I went out once several months ago, and that's not something I was really keying in on, this wasn't looked like in that particular area.
Could I ask a question here?
Sure.
Is this, this piece right here in the Water Resources District, or in the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer zone?
It's in the district, it's not in the buffer zone.
It's in the district.
It's not in a no distur.
Okay.
Not in a no disturb.
Okay.
The whole site's in the district.
Yeah.
But the no disturb is, goes to the northwest side.
While we're still on that one, I did go out there today and met Greg out of the site, the reason being, I wanted to really see how large an area this was, and, and take a look at it after reading the comments back and forth. And, you know, you're never really going to be able to tell if this was the original slope, or if it was altered, but it is a small area, I have a picture of it, it's conceivable to me that it could have been something that was done to create this flat lawn on the top. You know, you can kind of take a look at it, it's not really heavily vegetated, and there's that one, that's the slope, yeah, with it, there's a rock there. And this is what the rest of the site looks like, it's, you know, tends to be fairly flat, and all of a sudden you've got this little tiny slope kind of coming out of nowhere.
In relation, where is that in relation to this?
It's like, up here.
Okay.
This picture here is the highlighted yellow spot? This picture here is the highlighted yellow spot?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think this is a better.
Yeah, this is another thing.
Okay.
And the extent has.
And then kind of dropped off.
Yeah, I'd say.
It's like 10 by 20?
Yeah, it's about that size.
Is that a longer view? Where is this comparatively speaking? Any idea?
In here? Laura, what's the relationship of the close-up to the long, longer view picture?
The close-up is, is up high, the, the longer view is, is behind. It's more towards the wetland away from the house.
So you're looking up slope?
Yeah, that's kind of the flat cleared area when you get down below the slope.
It's not looking at this.
No.
No.
Okay.
That was just to give a general impression of the, you know, what the topography is like out there.
And the top of the slope is basically where the lawn begins?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, in that yellow where Greg highlighted, that, in the main picture is kind of you're standing there looking south, basically southwest?
You're looking kind of sideways at it. And then the, the bigger picture is, is further down below it.
Okay.
I guess we had a question back there?
Yes, please, calling, 675 Chester's Highway, and formerly on Water Resources. And I have a question for the gentleman who's willing to say it.
Mr. Morse.
What's your, what is your background? Are you an engineer?
Greg?
Yes, I'm a registered engineer.
You're an engineer, but you're not an archaeologist and you're not a historian. Are you a geologist?
I'm a licensed soil evaluator with the state of Massachusetts.
But you know what? You're not an archaeologist, and therefore, you have no scientific basis for saying that that land was disturbed.
Okay. I think, I think you made your point. Questions to the board? John?
I would feel much better, I think the, you know, I would feel much better if the case could be made that there was a restoration to what was thought to be the natural slope at some time, but that case has not been made. We've been talked about a lawn that's perhaps been built up, and now there's going to be a little bit more buildup, from what I understand of the discussion tonight. So, you know, we're, we're taking two steps beyond what is no longer the, the natural slope in the Water Resource Protection District, so that remains a concern.
I think what we're hearing is, is that it, it's not a natural condition. It was a man-made condition.
Right, but then there's to be, if I understood the discussion tonight.
I can't take something that.
Additional fill to, to, to kind of even that out. And so you're, now you're, you're getting two steps removed from what already isn't a natural condition, rather than restoration to the natural condition that I think the Water Resources Committee would, would feel better about. I would also point out that it's not my understanding in the law that it talks about major or minor, significant, insignificant. The size of the alteration is not a consideration. Be a 20 square feet or 2,000 square feet.
So could I ask you a question, John? If you were to look at this and come across this in the Water Resource District as it is, would your inclination be to, to regrade that back to some natural, what you felt was the natural slope? Is that what you're talking about?
If there was a justification, yes, I would follow, be more, be more perfect than yes.
Okay.
How would you think to determine what the original natural situation had been?
Through soils analysis and looking at the surrounding territory. I'm not saying it would be easy.
Laura, can I ask a sort of?
But do you think we could analyze the soil and figure it out?
I think it's been done before.
A procedural question. Suppose for the sake of discussion that this does fall into the category of something the zoning board needs to look at. What's the process to have that happen?
They would, the applicant would need to file an application with the building department for a zoning board finding of, of some kind, either a variance or a Section 6 finding. I'm not sure, you know, which they would apply for.
What's the connection between the zoning board regulations and authority to regulate and the Water Resource Protection regulations and ability to regulate?
Well, the zoning board could grant, you know, an exception to the zoning bylaw, and that's where the Water Resource Protection District regulations are. I think it's also possible, given past practice in, in Situate, and I'm not defending this and I'm not criticizing it either, but based on the size of the area and the discretion that the building commissioner has given the planning board with special permits before, that he would just say, you know, it's not really necessary. And if the planning board decides that this is acceptable, then, you know, he wouldn't make them go through that process. I think that's very possible. You would just have to, you know, go through it to find out.
Okay. Thank you.
So let me go back to John, and what you're suggesting is that you'd reinvent this 25 percent slope somewhere else?
No, I think he's, I think he's saying he would change that slope.
Oh, change that slope to?
To something, what, what it used to be.
More natural conditions.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to know how far you would take that alteration, because obviously, the lawn and the area where the house was and, you know, all of that is not the way it used to be.
If you're going to return it to natural, then it's unnatural the way it is?
Not natural. Not if it's been built up for the purposes of creating the lawn, no. Which seemed to be the conclusion that we're drawing by both.
So in effect, I think what we're saying is that the slope exists, but it was created. So it's not a natural 25 percent slope. So that would say that it's, it's an unnatural slope. Which takes, that makes the question raised disappear then.
I would argue no. I would say that the land has already been disturbed at some point in the past. We have to have a baseline somewhere. And if the baseline isn't the present, in our own good judgment, and people have spoken previously, like, God, we can't go back in history. We can't recreate what happened. There is a slope here. I don't know, they disturbed beyond what the bylaw says should be disturbed. Whether it's natural or unnatural, or big or small, is that, is that relevant?
The bylaw says a natural slope.
What it does is it goes to the basis of whether the bylaw is applicable, and it has, the bylaw is only applicable if it's a natural 25 percent slope, which we just agreed that it's not.
We didn't agree, we suspect.
Well, it's, the decision's really up to the, to the board.
I mean, all indication, visual indications indicate that it was, it was created to come back up when they built the lawn.
We can determine that from the picture.
I think you determined it by looking where the lawn was and the fact that this is at the end of the lawn. Greg?
And what I'm saying is that if you're going to do operations, you prefer that it be returned to a more natural state.
But we don't know what that natural state was. Greg?
I think it's important to note, under the applicable section of the bylaw where you see the dimensional regulations that apply to 25 percent slopes, it says that the purpose of preventing work on a 25 percent slope is to minimize erosion of natural slopes and reduce resulting sedimentation of natural drainage areas. I, for one, don't think the slope's natural as I presented, but I think that the intent of the bylaw here is to prevent erosion of downstream drainage areas, as the bylaw states. And we are providing erosion controls around this entire project, which prohibit anything from going into the down gradient drainage areas. So the slope is not natural, but we also comply with the intent of the bylaw underneath it by providing the erosion controls. And lastly, under the proposed conditions, we're not proposing any slopes greater than 25 percent, which, as everyone feels, 25 percent is the threshold. All of our slopes in the proposed conditions comply with that. They were more natural, 25 percent or less slope.
Anything else on the board? Okay. We'll move on to the next one. A variance from the WRPD bylaw 520.6, Design Guidelines, Section D, is needed from ZBA. This is the infiltration basin, and we're talking about the difference. Want to talk to that, Greg?
Sure. So when we originally designed this site, we had modeled our drainage basin as a detention basin, flip to the proposed plan. An infiltration basin in accordance with DEP needs a two-foot groundwater requirement. Through the review process, we found that we were just at that two-foot requirement, and the review engineer had us actually remove all infiltration credits from our basin. We're not taking credit here for an infiltration basin at all. The bylaw requires a three-foot, Mr. Crusell is correct, the bylaw requires three-foot separation from the bottom of an infiltration basin to groundwater. We're not taking any infiltration credit. That being said, if the board thinks it's necessary, we will raise the bottom of the basin one foot to comply with a three-foot groundwater requirement, even though we're not taking the infiltrative credit at the current time. I handed out a copy of the DEP publication Structural BMPs, Volume 2, Chapter 2, which is an outline of infiltration basins. And I might add that they are highly recommended near discharge, near or to critical areas, as outlined under Number 6, where it's listed. So we are willing to revise our plans to comply with the three-foot groundwater separation requirement, although we don't think it's necessary because we're not taking infiltration credit.
Bob?
Greg, can I ask then, when you're not taking infiltration credit for the basin, where are you making up that credit in the design of the drainage system?
The roof drywells.
Okay. But you'd be willing to do the belt and suspenders situation of?
Correct.
Making the basin comply and?
Correct, the basin.
Also using the drywells for roof runoff?
We'd leave the drywells in place, the basin itself, you know, we'd lose a foot of storage capacity out of the bottom, but we could make that up by raising the basin, you know, probably less than a foot, because it's larger at the top surface area. We're willing to make that change.
I mean, one's a physical requirement, the other's a calculation, so I mean, that makes sense.
Correct.
John?
I disagree that it's not an infiltration basin, unless I'm missing something. There is a something that drains water up. Is that correct, Greg?
For the water quality volume below the end.
But as soon as you have a something in the basin that drains out the bottom, it's not going to be a wet pond.
Right, but we didn't model it to any.
It's not a wet pond, it's an infiltration basin. It's, the question is, he did not use a credit of exfiltration during the storm, because if you want to do that, you have to do a much more advanced analysis, including mounding, permeability testing, or have four feet of separation. So I disagree 100 percent. It's an infiltration basin.
But if he raises.
So he needs to raise it to the three-foot separation.
If he raises, if he raises, then your problems are solved.
If you, although I will say, you've got to have a, the way he designed it is a little minor issue, but it's got to have three feet of separation from the absolute bottom, which would be a spot, not an area.
Okay.
And that does have to happen.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
John?
While I agree, the, there is a significant issue in how close stormwater, which we now understand through current science as, you could rephrase, polluted water, is the, the close proximity to groundwater. The two and a half versus three versus four, obviously, the two and a half is the least favorable option. You would want as much filtration between the stormwater and the groundwater as possible, so that polluted water is not getting into the groundwater. Where this whole conversation is flawed is that we're talking about the infiltration system for a three-property development, rather than versus a two-property development. And the context of the conversation then kind of gets lost. Whether we're going to grade a little area, whether it's an infiltration system or something else, this is all in the context of the, the three-property plan. And that's the basic flaw which, which we remain to see. All these issues could be discussed in terms of a two-property plan. I would bet that a number of these questions wouldn't even need to come up.
But the application in front of us is not for a two-house. It's for three.
Yes, I know, which, although you've approved the site plan, doesn't mean you have to issue the permits, correct?
What we've done is we've confirmed what we think is the conventional subdivision density, and then we're about to go into what the actual subdivision would be.
Maximum density.
Maximum density. I mean, the reality is, this is nice, but it'll never be built. It's never intended to be built.
This, this is the flexible.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I've been saying.
I, I, I had a clarification on that, Greg, because you showed, you were talking, you pointed to this, but really, we should be talking about the groundwater, the, the three feet on the conventional, right? This is where I'm getting confused.
The, the three-foot groundwater is how our current definitive subdivision is modeled, okay? Does not comply with the three-foot separation. So we will raise the current definitive subdivision to comply with the three feet. Okay? Calculations were never provided on the conventional density plan.
You're not, you're not required to do that, just as you're not required to engineer the retaining wall or get a building permit for it, for that.
Okay, but.
So this is, this, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, isn't this question then moot? Because I guess I'm trying to divorce just the, the density question, right? So this is more of a, you know, if we do a FOSD plan going forward. So I think we need to sort of put, shut the door on the, the, the density? I mean, that's kind of what we're discussing, right?
Correct.
So I don't know. To me, it's kind of, not necessarily that it's moot, but maybe it's something that we pick up later on. It should be about, I think all of the things we're trying to figure out here is, could the conventional plan be constructed with the three units? That's what it comes down to.
That's exactly what we're doing, and we've already decided that.
We voted.
I know we voted, but I mean, the letters.
They asked to reopen it.
The letters were.
I, I think this letter was suggesting that it be readdressed.
Readdressed.
Right, so we're trying to determine whether that is something we would do.
And I think the reason I'm spending as much time, or we're spending as much time on it, is, is the fact that we need to close these issues and, and resolve these issues before we go vote. Because if I don't, then they come back up next week or the week after. So are we, have we reached an understanding regarding the three feet?
Yes.
John?
The conventional density plan do not have three feet of separation.
No, but it could be revised to reflect that.
Prior to approval? Something that would be done prior to approval?
Approval of what?
Of the three-home density.
No, I think, I think the fundamental question here, John, is, in the conventional plan, could that three feet be obtained?
Well, based on.
Because that's the decision we're making here.
I do.
I mean, the, the thing with the conventional plan is that the basin's further down the slope. So all these things are complicated, because the testing is here. So the testing is basically up in this area, and the basin's down in this area. So if you read the test, I think the highest groundwater was at 65. The bottom of this is like 65.5. But it's 30 feet or so down slope, and the groundwater tends to follow a slope, so is it, I mean, this thing would have to come up certainly a fair bit, and if it did, this wasn't sized. It looks like it's probably a little bigger than that one. But if it's more impervious, it would probably have to be. I mean, if it comes up, what would it do to, I mean, would it pinch back into this lot a little bit? Probably. It's a, it's a theoretical thing. It's not like you can just say, yep, three feet, raise it, done. It's, it's work to, to answer questions like that. It's not a, could they come up with it if they had given that permission of, you know, they'll probably come up with something that'll probably make that lot smaller, and they'll have to juggle all the lot lines, they'll have to do all that. I don't know if you've tried it or not.
Greg?
I, I would also state that the basin does not have to be an infiltration basin. It could be a constructed wetland. It could be a wet basin. There are other types of basins that aren't required to meet a three-foot separation, and you could make up infiltration through larger roof drywells or other, other systems. But it certainly is something that could be done on a conventional density plan, absolutely.
And your professional judgment is that it could be done as well, John?
To change to a different type of basin, that issue would come into play.
Right, but we didn't have that in front of us, all we have is this.
I'm just reacting to what we actually added and I didn't change it. You could come up with a whole different design, I mean, there's lots of different ways to look at it, and how you deal with the infiltration is another factor, I mean, it's, all these things are work, and I'm just taking the simple, if it was an infiltration, if we directed three feet, you'd have to probably push the lot back.
But it's doable.
Would the pushing lot back affect the ability to get everything in there for three?
The thing's pretty tight now, it would be certainly tighter, I don't know how much cushion there is in the lots, but there seems to be enough overall area, it's just, you know, you'd end up, I mean, let's face it, looking at that thing, the lots are pretty convoluted to start with, they'd be even more complicated.
Okay.
We go into the next one?
Isn't though the whole purpose of approving the conventional plan is that the emphasis on the developer to show a plan that can actually be built?
Yep.
And I don't see that he showed that yet. If he changes the basin, then you might have an outlot size?
But if he changed the basin type, we don't know what would happen. But I think we, from what we've heard is that there's the ability, the capability of doing it. The next one. Approval from another department and waivers from subdivision rules and regs are required for the retaining wall. Retaining wall, the key element for approval, requires the approval of the building's commissioner, i.e. a building permit. Greg?
Mr. Chairman, the retaining wall on this site is located on the conventional density plan only. It's located on the western side of Road A. We had talked previously about how the road was right up against the eastern lot line, and we had a very, very small strip of land, a lot on a rat tail, if you will, to gain lot area. I think the boards agreed, there's no shape factor in town, there's nothing that prevents you from doing a rat tail. Hearing the board's concern here, we moved the road closer to the tributary. In doing that, that raises the height of the retaining wall. It raised it to five feet, which would require a building permit. The town has built retaining walls to hold up roadways in other locations. Down at the Rotary, there's one, at the intersection of Hollet Street, the Country Way, there's one, at Jericho Road, and Beaver Dam Road, there's a retaining wall, all right along the edge of the right-of-way. It can be built. I could move this cul-de-sac closer to the lot line and reduce the height of that wall under four feet, there'd be no need for a building permit. I'm not required to get a building permit on a conventional density plan, this is a schematic plan. I believe your engineer at the last meeting agreed that this wall seemed feasible for construction.
John?
I gave you a letter that has basically the text from the subdivision regs specifically as to how the walls go, and for the purposes of the conventional plan, I believe it's preliminary plan, and I think the entire discretion for the wall lies with the planning board, until it's submitted for a building permit, the building commissioner can get involved. The, I did recommend that you get guidance from DPW, because DPW, were it a wall to hold up the road, DPW would also have some, according to the regs, the construction of retaining walls shall be in a manner approved by the Director of Public Works or Building Commissioner as applicable. Against the road, I think the DPW is the one that should have some input, and probably the building inspector subsequent to the DPW saying, yes, that's an acceptable type of wall. So with the purposes of the conventional plan, though, I think the full discretion of the wall lies with the planning board as to whether you think it is a reasonable thing to have a wall in that type of thing, for the purposes of this conventional density plan. Were it to come, for this plan to come forward as a definitive subdivision plan, I would recommend that you get better detail and feedback from DPW, and prior to, you know, construction, the building inspector would have to issue a building permit and all those things, but with this level, I'm not sure that you can do that, because you go all the time, other than a schematic.
No, and we wouldn't go requesting a building permit for a definitive plan that would never be built. Questions from the board? Comments from the board? Okay. Next item is noncompliance with WRPD bylaw 52.5. It says, even if the retaining wall were allowed, stormwater be directed in portions of the non-disturbed zone. The bylaw states that no stormwater should be directed into the non-disturbed zone. Want to address that, Greg?
Sure. Stormwater typically is what emanates off of your proposed development, your proposed roadway, your new impervious surfaces, and what we have here is, they're referring to the area on the western side of the retaining wall that's existing ground, and it's going to go back as ground.
Why don't you show how the water sheets of the property now?
Sure. So right now on the property, all of the water generally flows in a southerly direction, this way on the site. On the conventional density plan here, where we have the retaining wall shown, and because of the way your specific roadway cross-section is, your specific roadway cross-section requires that everything inside the right-of-way drain to the street and be collected in a drainage system. So the retaining wall, you'll notice, is right at the edge of the right-of-way, so everything here in this development is picked up and collected through a drainage system, a catch basin, a particle separator, a drainage basin, prior to discharge. Discharge is outside of the 150-foot area, it's also outside of the DEP Zone A area, so all of the proposed work here is encapsulated and treated prior to runoff. If we're simply talking about water landing on the western side of the retaining wall that lands there now on natural ground, it'll continue to do that. We're not proposing any discharges, or discharge is where you are collecting surface runoff, conveying it somehow, a type of gutter system, and then you're discharging it to a new point. We're not proposing any new discharges within that zone.
You're changing, you are changing the distribution of that flow. It's not all sheet flow, it's point source flow in a number of locations here now?
Yes, exactly.
Right?
Correct. And the DEP requires that no new point source discharge can be released unless it's been treated.
Right.
And this shows the applicable treated system.
Before we're putting out something to be, I have to step back to that retaining wall a little bit, because the regulations also say that it can't be over four foot high.
Was it four feet above ground level?
Face of, exposed face.
Without a building permit, though?
No.
No, just it can't be in the subdivision regs, so, you know, whatever goes into that conventional density plan.
So was this one over four feet high on the conventional?
That's what I'm not sure, I think we just need to go back and look at that.
It was five feet?
And it's less than four for the majority of it, and it might have been a long spot at this time.
When I looked at it, I spotted, spotted along it, and it looked to be four feet all the way through.
Without providing the actual spot shots in between the pod doors, I can't definitively answer that right now, but it's right at that interchange. And as stated, we could pull that whole thing further to the east if that became an issue.
So due back to the grading one, the flow?
Yeah, the flow. What's being suggested is that we're directing the flow into the do-not-d disturb or not disturbed zone.
I read that, what it says is that any, yeah, here's what it says directly in the bylaws, is any surface or subsurface discharge, including but not limited to stormwater runoff and domestic or industrial wastewater, cannot be discharged into the buffer zone. So I looked up to see if there were any definition in the zoning bylaw for discharge, there is none. And I looked, DEP, Nicholas, there's none, but I would tend to think that discharge would mean more of a direct flow. Well, it doesn't have to be a pipe, it could just be a swale. But it has to be, I think, if you have just a slope that has water hit it, how much runs off? The only place that is actually directly in the, I mean, so what you have here is this, in this one, you've got a slope here, is this is the 150, the purple?
Correct.
So any of this slope here doesn't directly discharge to it anyway, because you have woods of 10 or 15 feet, maybe 20, 24, you know, 15, 20 feet of woods from the slope to that. Now here, you would have some grass, I would assume, that they would, the wall, it would flow in that direction, but it's a strip of proxim, you know, it's two to eight or 10 feet wide, and some of this probably would not have to be altered, so you have a little strip like this, I don't know how much runoff you're going to generate. There's no real, I, the water will flow that way, there's a swale this way that directs any of this, this direction, so none of this goes over, but if that swale pitched over into this, I would say that would be an issue. Now you're directing a point discharge right into this zone. If you're, there is an outlet, or this doesn't even have it shown, but I think there's an outlet, you know, that's here somewhere, that's going to be maybe 100 feet from the zone, but if it's not direct by the time it spreads out, I don't...
And what do you think?
Typically, you have a spreader or a weir or something like that.
If you had it directly, you know, a swale or a pipe or anything, even a roof drain, with a downspout and a gutter and a pipe, that's a discharge directly to it.
What would you consider?
This is more of a sheet flow situation, if you look at the calculations, sheet flow is generally measured for the first 50 feet. I don't know that you'd have anything other than sort of a sheet condition in that first 50 feet, that's really considered a discharge.
What would you consider a subsurface discharge?
Subsurface discharge, I would consider being like a foundation drain, or...
Roof drains?
If you had a pipe trench, like it was filled with stone and followed the trench, that might be a subsurface discharge. Just by its nature, if the subsurface groundwater flow is not being discharged, right, I mean, because it's not going anywhere yet, right? It had to be a discharge, it has to, you had to see it, you had to see water flowing in it, in a location to be a discharge. If you look up definition in a dictionary, I think discharge is going to define a point where you can actually see it, measure it. I think water will flow into that, all the water from the site will flow to the reservoir, either through surface, or it'll soak into the ground and break out into the wetland, or it's eventually going to get there, because that is...
Water Resources Committee remains concerned that stormwater flowing off the street as sheet flow will go, just by the construction of a road, where you have a crown and then the way the roads are built. Stormwater is, roads are built because stormwater is first a safety hazard, and roads are built to remove stormwater from the road, and it's going to be directed off the road, particularly in the close proximity to the 150 no disturbance zone, it's going to end up in that no disturbance zone.
In this case, it's all on this, the east side of the wall?
Correct.
Which will then follow the wall and go into the no disturbance zone, because the wall follows the no disturbance zone as well.
But it kind of veers off, though, I mean, the no disturbance zone from what I see, right? It follows the wall, but then it veers off.
Well, in the map I'm looking at, they're virtually very close parallel lines, and the wall ends, and the no disturbance zone is still right there.
But it picks up a swale. Right, there's a swale at the end of the wall.
Correct, that's a swale that directs all of the water to the drainage basin.
So instead of coming back at the end and just being scattered, in effect, what it does is routed around through, initially through that swale into the basin.
Well, that's my next point on that in the next paragraph.
Okay. Anything else before we move to the next one? Let's see, where am I? Noncompliance with the WRPD bylaw, flexible open space bylaw rules and regs. Besides degrading parts of the non-disturbed zone, natural flow into areas that recharge the tributary and its boarding wetlands will be directed away from those sensitive areas towards the detention infiltration basin. There's no room for greenscaping on the site if three houses are built. Ball's back in your court, Greg. I feel like a tennis judge here.
You have to look at, I mean, how this site's broken up, if you look at the contours, all of this water here is flowing to the reservoir, which is down off of the plant, it's all flowing in this direction. In the post-condition, it's all flowing in that direction. We're not taking water here and directing it to another tributary or another subcatchment area, we're still tributary to the same reservoir, we're not taking it, reallocating it. All the houses here drain, the front garages, you know, are draining out to the street, they're draining to the swale, they're all being treated, there's plenty of room here for landscaping on these lots. We're not directing the flows anywhere that would be currently naturally going.
But you're changing the release points.
We're changing the release point, but at the down gradient property line, the water is all flowing at the same location. And that's where we're required to analyze the project.
John?
This, the way I read this one is that, what it says, I'll just read, it said, "All runoff from impervious surfaces will be recharge on site, diverted towards areas covered with vegetation from," it says from surface infiltration, I think it's a, it's close to four surface infiltration, they said, or as otherwise directed. And then it gives a listing of how, what, how your infiltration standards can be met, and basically what the intent of this bylaw is, is to have as much of the flow, flow over the, just the roof would come down, flow over the lawn and over the woods and the grass and get soaked in. I will say, I haven't done this for a long, long time as an engineer, that gives you no reduction in flooding or anything, it works for small storms, and it works great for once you get into the big ones, which we're asked to handle, I'd say it won't work at all, because all the runoff then will, and it doesn't help you. But the one thing I think that's missing in terms of this, and it's, again, it's only a preliminary level plan, is that they talk about sand filters, organic filters, to remove nitrogen from stormwater. I don't know, does any provision to remove nitrogen from this storm?
You want to talk about nitrogen?
I was planning on talking about it as part of the flexible open space, you know, we could certainly...
Can you give me 30,000 feet right now?
Now, you could do construction of, you could, you could set up a nitrogen reduction system within a swale if you had to. The DEP also on the sheet that I've given you, you know, with an infiltration basin, the DEP's claiming that total nitrogen reduction is between 15, 60 percent. That's noted at the bottom under pollutant removal addition season.
Questions to the board?
So, whether it be this or the flexible open space plan, the discussion of the non-disturbed zone is something which concerns me very much, and I'm sure concerns the Water Resources Committee. I think over the course of the summer, we've seen a lot of plans, a lot of hard work has gone into this, and you've made your judgment based upon plans, which are, once it's built plans. You're not taking into the consideration of the building process itself. It is a non-disturbed zone, not a non-alter zone, and in order to build the retaining wall, in order to build the roadway as it's currently planned, there will be disturbance to the do-not-d disturb zone. there will be disturbance to the do not disturb zone in the course of the construction. And I feel that that needs to be taken into account as well.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Part of the conventional plan proposed a sheet pile barrier just on the outside of the non-disturbed zone. Do you think that would protect it?
One could hope, but the listings usually work, not necessarily. Usually the construction footprint is much broader.
No, but it's all going to be to the east of that, of that particular wall.
Good luck. I do know that in an earlier letter, there was concern about, on post-construction, having a decorative wall put just outside the non-disturbed zone, so that others didn't decide five, six years from now, fifty years from now, they don't understand the current law, that they not go and make their yards a little bigger, the volleyball set, stuff like that. I haven't seen that in the plans, but I'm concerned about the footprint of construction itself encroaching the non-disturbed zone. And if you were designing in such a way to, to give a little more breathing room, I mean, probably be much happier.
John, do you want to make any comments, Craig?
Well, I think what we proposed with the sheet pile would totally limit the amount of disturbance you have on the site. The sheet pile, there's no reason why it couldn't be left up, not just to serve as a sheet pile below ground for excavation, but left up as a, as a construction control barrier. You could leave it sticking out of the ground three feet or four feet, and that's a physical barrier. I think it certainly is constructable how it's presented on the conventional density plan.
And I will point out that I enjoyed his use of the word limit and not prevent.
Point made.
Thank you.
Any else from the board? Okay. Then, I think this brings us to the last one. The actual edge of the tributary must be determined to comply with the WRPD bylaw 520.5. And it goes on to say that it was never surveyed properly. The hydrogeologists from the DEP disagreed with the findings of Mr. Ives, who was consultant for the CONCOM. We're talking about identifying a bank of the tributary?
Yes.
During a storm event.
Do we have that disagreement on record somewhere?
Between the DEP hydrogeologist and the CONCOM?
Yeah.
I really have not been aware of that.
That was part of the conservation process. I can fill you in on all of that. When we originally visited the site, we had a professional wetland scientist with a master's in engineering go out and delineate the wetland edge, Brad Holmes, on the existing conditions plan here. And what he delineated were two wetlands. He delineated a bordering vegetated wetland, which is shown here on the bulb line. He also delineated what's called an inland bank. The inland bank was what he thought was the tributary to the reservoir. And that starts at the furthest, most downgradient location of the site, down here, and it comes up. And he labeled those flags right here. And it came up to this point. At that location, he thought there ceased to be a definitive channel in the ground. Okay? And that's where the end of the bank stopped. He also delineated a stream up top here. That came down. Conservation Commission, when we filed with our AMRA process, they went out, they reviewed all of these wetland flags, and there were a lot of questions about the tributary. We had Bruce Baugh, who's a hydrogeologist with the DEP, come down and walk this site. The Conservation Commission also hired Steve Ives on behalf of the town. He's a water commissioner in Norwell. He came out, and he determined that the end of the tributary out here was this location, right here. When the DEP came out, the DEP said, "No, the end of the tributary is not there. You have to consider this as part of the tributary." On our original submittable of plans, we showed our 150-foot and our 200-foot setbacks off of the line that was given to us by the town assituate conservation review agent. Our plans now show the 150-foot buffer and the 200-foot buffer off of the entire tributary area. In this location, between flags 100 and IB8, there's no definitive bank observed. We had the wetland scientists go out again and hang another flag. It's not shown on this plan, but there's another flag in the middle. It does not alter the locations of where this tributary is. The tributary has been observed by the DEP and walked by the DEP for this portion of the site and this portion of the site. That one flag has not been looked at. That section there is approximately eighty feet. But you'll also notice that that location is the part out here, that when you take the 150-foot buffer, it's the furthest most away from the project. So it's the, the inside corner here. That revised flag will be shown on the next round of plans, but it does not alter the limit of work on this conventional density plan or the flexible open space plan.
Good follow-up questions, sir?
No. I just wanted to know that there was a, a record of this discussion between the DEP and the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, John?
First form. Me?
He'll get you a shot in a minute.
Yeah, I mean, yes, they should connect the dots here and make a tweet. And whoever's supposed to look at that flag to confirm it, just look at it and confirm it. If that makes sense. It's unlikely, looking at the plan, that the thing jogs out, even if it went ten or fifteen feet, it probably would not, if Greg is right, that is one of the further places away. So if you did jog, I mean, I guess if it, that's known, and that's known, the only thing, you know, so that, that's 150 feet, and that's 150 feet. You'd have to come up like this somewhere to make this thing come over more.
You'd have to be almost somewhere between thirty and fifty feet.
Take a hard right?
I mean, it has to be, I think this, what happens is, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, is they took it from here, kind of through 150 foot, from here, 150 foot. If this goes away, or even like this, I don't think that goes, because it went straight, like there, there, you know, you might make this thing come up in like this a little bit. But that's, I think, the 100-foot buffer in the wetland. So it would have to go through power over. Because I think in the, in this one, you are allowed to work it. But in the, in the other one, you have to be a hundred, outside the hundred, I think. But yeah, please get the right stuff on the plan, that's going to be on it.
Still to go.
So I, I won't, it will probably be a bad time to make jokes about the old match bullet and the rest of that stuff, but we would ask that if the, first of all, we want to express the appreciation of the work that went into verifying as best as possible the actual tributary and not relying upon the somewhat inaccuracies of orthophoto GIS and, and old files. So we want to express appreciation that some effort has been made towards verifying the actual tributary. So we would ask that continued reviews made of this, that it be done during a storm event, so we could get the actual magnitude of the tributary and the flow of that tributary.
Question to both engineers. Is there a way to identify the possible or most likely channel, even though you can't visually see a bank, through soil type, vegetation, contours surrounding the, the area that may slope down on one side, slope up on the other, things like that?
You can, I mean, generally, you can pick through, this time of year is probably the worst.
Yeah.
Because all the herbaceous vegetation's grown.
Yeah.
And sometimes you can tell by vegetation changes and things like that. But I suspect that the place is very thick with jewel weed, and you probably can't even get through it unless the deer are eating it. And it is best, I mean, the best time is in the spring.
It's in April, right?
You know, you might be able to see the mud, and you can see it flow. It might be one of those, yeah, it might be.
Srouping, you know.
You see a little, yeah, smooth spots, and it's, I hadn't, I'd walked hard of that, but it was pretty thick even in the spring to walk it, as I remember. And it's not just the, there's a lot of, like, really viney, it's tough, tough going. I mean, I think what we did is we went down, looked at it, and then looped back around, because you couldn't really get through.
Yeah.
It is possible to see. It's tough, though, this time of year.
Yeah, yeah, I can see that, okay.
Even a storm this time of year, you may not see it, because it may not, it's a tributary, but it's a, it's not a perennial stream.
Right.
And if the, if it's a little bit of rain on dry ground, a lot of it, that never makes it that far. And a lot of runoff doesn't happen, because the lawn's turned up.
More like a squail.
If you want to see some pictures of it, I was out there and took a couple pictures of it.
It hasn't been flagged?
You know, I'm not sure about that.
That was, that was further into the woods.
It was further into the woods. So was it on that abutting property, or, because you could see that abutting property from the end of it?
Right, no.
Can you point out maybe where it was?
We were standing right about at this location, right here, Laura.
Okay.
So we were, we were looking at this property. And we were, we were at that last flag, so.
Okay. These two pictures are in basically the same location, just from a little different angle. Just so you.
Give us your interpretation.
It's not like a clear stream with banks. I mean, it's just, you know, it doesn't present itself that way.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no sort of scoured rocks or anything like that showing.
You'd expect a channel. It's not there. It's rather flat.
There's no way you could tell from these photos.
Let me ask the board, where are we?
In terms of where we're likely to go on this?
Well.
I, I, I remain unconvinced, and.
Could I give you my summary of, of the points as I went through, and then maybe that'll help us
Okay.
just discuss things. So, walking through the points that we discussed, I think the first two items we identified is, really, they weren't applicable, right?
Yeah, great.
So I think we can sort of cross those off. The third item, I think we had sort of two, two comments there that seemed to be compelling, but I, I will restate what I heard. One is that we have an unnatural slope there, not a natural slope. And the second is that the conventional or the flexible subdivision plan will still comply with the intent of the bylaw for, by bringing erosion control with whatever gets developed there. So that seems to me to be sort of mitigating factors, anyway. On the next item, I think we all agreed we needed to have that kind of separation from the groundwater, the three-foot separation, but that it, this is where I think it got a little questionable, is whether you could actually do that without affecting the lot design.
On the conventional plan?
On the conventional plan, correct. And I'm really speaking to the conventional plan here, okay? On the next item dealing with the wall, I think it was pretty clear that the planning board at this stage of the game has discretion on the wall, and that we all believed last time that the wall was a four-foot wall, not a five-foot wall, and it, and it feels like that's where we still are. On the item after that, I think this really spoke to just a relatively small area on the, on the west side of the wall that might be considered, you know, a sheet flow for, that could be possibly erosion flow or something there. But as John had said, it seemed like it was like a two-foot section that, that carried on the west side of the wall. So it seemed like it was a relatively small area, and whether it would have a big impact is, is, I guess, a question still. With respect to the next item, I really, I think, I think it's true that we've changed the release points. The question is, does that change effectively the recharge in the Water Resources District? Or we just, is it still all ultimately ending up in the tributary again?
That's, that's the way I heard that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, the last item, I think, I think we would all agree that we want to try to close the survey loop or whatever on the, on the tributary. That's kind of where, that's what I got out of all of our conversation. And it seemed to me, maybe the open items really have to do with the infiltration basin, and whether, if that gets, if that really got modified to give the three-foot, whether it would affect, have a domino effect on the rest of the layout.
Or change to a different type of basin that wasn't an infiltration basin.
Right, but we didn't have that in front of us, so I'm, I'm sort of reacting to what we had to look at as part of the conventional plan.
Yep.
And I'm not sure whether John was, had an opinion on that, as to whether that could be done, or maybe it could be done, or you'd have to do it.
What, a different type of basin?
Yeah.
I think it, it makes sense to stick with the infiltration basin. That's what's on the, on the other plan, it's established with, it, and it's not calculated, and it's not designed, but you can look at the one that's been designed for the flexible, and you can say, okay, it should be slightly bigger, because it's more impervious. They're apples and apples. They came up with a completely different design or something, and drew it on the plan. There's no, I mean, what does it tell that?
And there's really nothing for us to react to, anyway. We, we don't have that to look at tonight, anyway, so.
But aren't they within about twenty-five feet of each other, the, the proposed and the old?
The proposed is further, it's closer to the cul-de-sac. This one's further down.
Yeah, but it's only like twenty-five feet.
Yeah, maybe. The only trouble is that there's, is they push it down to get out of the testing.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
So I think the upper edge of the conventional is pretty much the middle of the flexible.
The upper, okay.
So the northeast edge side of the conventional is roughly where the middle of the flexible. And the, the conventional one obviously is wider, so. I mean, you can tell by the buffers, the buffers on the other one. And this thing here is the, this is the hundred-foot buffer, and this one, and this one's down towards the, in the fifty, so this one's basically down here. So it's.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We see the, we're going to these technical issues that Joe has outlined in his letter, and almost trying to discuss how we can overcome them, or how a applicant can overcome them to make it viable. And the purpose of this letter is to request that the decision of the prior hearing be rescinded. Is that something we're going to move to do at this meeting?
We don't know yet.
I think the idea was we were going to evaluate all these points and determine whether that was something we thought was appropriate or not.
Justified and appropriate.
Richard?
What am I thinking?
I almost hesitated to ask that, but I will anyway.
Well, here's where I'm thinking. I still feel like, you know, what we voted on last time was just setting the density. We didn't really vote on anything else. Was it feasible, or was the conventional plan feasible for three homes? And I'm hearing tonight that it still, you know, engineering-wise, it would be feasible to present a conventional density plan for three homes that could be built there. Now, with that being said, I know that you asked the question about, could it ever be reduced? I think, I'm still saying that our decision was I think, I'm still saying that our decision was correct, but now as we look on to the flexible open space plan, we need to look at things as Laura mentioned, what are the public benefits to the town, what are they providing? And as part of that, I think potentially the public benefit could be coming back with two homes instead of three. Maybe I'm being crazy, but that's kind of where I'm leaning at right now. So I still think our decision as of last week, or two weeks ago, about the actual density was correct based on the information that we had and even the information that I've heard tonight, that's where I'm thinking.
I was the only holdout last week, or two weeks ago, and I, I may still be. I'm concerned about a couple of things. I'm concerned, obviously, about the, the community opposition. I'm concerned about the, the fact that this project as presented now in terms of, of the conventional approach is, as I perceive things, marching right along the edge. And we've heard some discussion that it, it isn't possible to march right along the edge without some, at some point in the construction project stepping over. I'm concerned about the, the idea that what we're, at least as I look at things, we're being asked to, to balance the, the interest of commercial interest on one hand and an interest in terms of preserving our, our environment on the other. And it, the environment isn't, isn't changing, it's still there and it's not moving anywhere, but we're, we're moving our, our proposed construction project right up to the very limit. And I would like to see some more deference paid to things like drinking water quality and all those sorts of things. We're being asked to make findings a fact. And I think that, at least speaking for myself, I am within my rights to say I decline to make that finding a fact because I'm unconvinced. The, the developer has the burden of persuading me and I'm not, that's, that's what I have to say on the matter.
However, I believe it's within our right, just to counter that. What we did last week, or two weeks ago, was just set the maximum, maximum. We did not guarantee that they can build three houses there, we just set the maximum that they could build would be three homes on that, on this lot, or this development. And then I think it's within our right or our jurisdiction to say, based on all the information, the community feedback, based on the conventional, I agree, being right up to the edge of the limit and other factors, we have special, it's my understanding, Laura, we have, since it's a special permit, we can make those considerations at that time.
Be that as it may.
Okay.
It's only a special permit if it's a, a flexible open space.
I mean, there was, there was some, some discussion about the idea that if, if we said three houses, you know, they have the right to put three houses there. And, and that's my concern, is that if we, if we come back at some point and say, now you're gonna do two, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with the, the rules at that point in, in time, and maybe I need to become. But I, I don't wanna see ourselves getting boxed into a corner.
Well?
Okay, where to start? I guess with some background in development and construction, I'm more convinced than other members of the board that this conventional plan could be built without disturbance to the wetlands if it were monitored correctly, designed correctly. And I don't see any reason to doubt that that at least could happen, you know? Is it a certainty? No, nothing's a certainty. I also look at the, the kind of limit, if that's the word that everybody's been using, of, of the various areas of, of this site. And certainly the no disturbs limit is a very important one to protect the wetlands and the tributary to the reservoir and the groundwater and drinking water supply of the town. And it is a limit. It was set with advice and consent of the Water Resources Board and of engineers and presumably everyone else involved at a particular dimension. The dimension has been shown on this plan. If that was an uncomfortable dimension for any reason, then maybe instead of a hundred and fifty feet, it should have been set at two hundred feet. But it wasn't, it was set at a hundred and fifty feet. And limits have two sides, you know? If, if that's the limit of a no disturb zone, then I can disturb right up to the other side of that limit.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not for dense development and, and kind of overrunning the town, as you know, we had plenty of discussion about that, any more than anyone else, but I am for adhering to rules and, and, and regulations. And as I think I said earlier in the series of hearings, I can't find any legal ground to not approve what we've seen. You know, we've said a, a couple of other things, we don't like the sort of arbitrary rat-tail lot configuration that's, that's used to make this possible. Well, then we need to go and pass new zoning regulations that will not allow that. But right now, we have no such regulations. You know, we may not like the fact that this is so close to the one hundred and fifty-foot no disturb limit, but that limit was set to make sure that the groundwater supply was not impacted, so presumably that's the right limit. And as I said, if I, if I'm the, on the other side of that limit, I should be able to use it just the way it's being used on the Water Resources side as a limit.
Fair enough.
So that's where I'm coming.
Steven?
I guess I, I see both Richard and Eric's sides here. I, I do think there's, there are a couple of things that came out today that I, that we didn't hear last week, the last time, particularly about the separation on the infiltration, infiltration basin. And I, I recognize John's comment about the concern about disturbing an area during construction. And I think both of those issues will need to be dealt with, and I think the broader issue will need to be dealt with on the benefit to the town in a flexible open space plan. But I, I tend to agree with Richard that what we approved was a maximum. And as we look at the, the overall benefits that come with a flexible open space plan, then we'll have to weigh those, those benefits against, you know, the, the impacts here. And I think we'll definitely need to address things like construction and, and how we protect that line in the future as homeowners buy homes there too. But I think on the whole, it appears to me that, you know, we've addressed all of the, all of the zoning bylaw issues here that we can address, and it appears that they've, they've been addressed. And I would, I would sort of be in the same boat of moving forward.
Please, next, please me next. I look at it from the standpoint of I've got two charges in front of me. One is to come back up and to sit there and make sure that the conventional subdivision basically complies with the rules and regulations. And what I'm seeing is that it, it really does, I mean, I may have to tweak it a little bit, but in effect I've got a maximum density that I would be comfortable that I could build. The second piece that, that I've got a responsibility for, and watch it because I'm gonna agree with Eric a little bit here, and that is, when I first look at it, it's to whether it exists and how it complies with rules and regulations. I've got very little flexibility, and either bylaw is yes or the bylaw is no. But when it comes back to the special permit, then I got flexibility to come back up and sit there and see what, what I like to see and what do I feel is, is best served for this piece of property. The only way that I can get there and provide those, and satisfy those feelings is through a flexible open space subdivision. I can't do that through a conventional subdivision. So I think that there's a, some tweaking that, that might need to be done, right? But I'm very comfortable with the decision that I could build that subdivision and comply with all rules and regulations and still provide a maximum density of three. I guess if, the way I've sensed the way the board is, I have four people that feel that the maximum density of three is a reasonable thing.
Is that, is that what the four people said, that it's unreasonable?
Those are my words.
Oh, that's a word.
But rather than put words in your mouth, is that, is that, is that, is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I, I'm.
I would say it's, it's compliant.
Compliant, yeah, that, maybe not reasonable, but.
So we got a compliant, a compliant, a compliant.
Yeah, it complies with the regulations, as Bob.
It complies with our obligations.
As, as Bob said, we're following the rules and they follow the rules. So those are our rules that are the town of Situate and our zoning bylaws. And they have conceivably followed those rules, I think.
So I've got four compliance, but.
I'll, I'll be the lone, the lone guy out, I guess, but it still passes.
I, I'll get to him in a minute. So, I'm sorry, I quit.
No, no, you, you're, you're fine.
No, I didn't catch the tail of your statement.
I, I said, I guess I'm gonna continue to be the lone guy that's, that's unconvinced, but it's a vote of, you know.
No, I understand.
Yeah, and that's fine.
I'm just, just counting heads, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not analyzing nor criticizing at all.
Well, really, right now, nothing, nothing's on the table per se, right? We're just discussing.
Okay. Mark, distinguished alumni?
Mark, twenty-five, pressing out. I've had the great, good pleasure of serving on this board in the past. And I really respect the hard work you're doing, the hard work the applicants doing here and John's work, because I know you're always in the tough spot when you're in that position, trying to really just thread the technical needle. I remember vividly being, having some of these conversations, Bill, you and Laura, I'm sure recall some of these when we've been there before, where they try to deal with this conventional density issue. And you asked the question, is it really buildable without requiring the developer to do all of the work of proving that it is through the pit, pest beds and things like that? Because the whole idea of moving them to the flexible is to conclude that and then get some benefit to the community. So I can see how there's this, even, and I remember feeling this, this impetus to say yes to a conventional, to get to the flexible, to be able to have the discussion. I also remember vividly, sometimes after the fact, feeling like, oh my God, we let the cat out of the bag. When I hear you guys hesitating around the word compliant, reasonable versus compliant, I suggest there's doubt. And I suggest that your job in the conventional, in approving the conventional is to say, we really believe that is a plausible number because that's gonna set the number that you shoot for in the flexible. There's a reason that it's that two-step process. I'm, I'm going back to ten thousand feet for you and reminding you of what the call is here. Why you have a board rather than have this be a staff process. I've worked in communities where this is done at the staff level because it is just a, an assessment of the bylaw. The SAT staff says yes or no, there's no judgment built in. And if it does, then you move to the next phase, the special permit phase that required a board. We don't do it that way here because I think we believe you should listen to, for example, the input of peer boards. So if you feel like you're on the margin and you have a peer board, like the Water Resources board, weighing in very strongly, not equivocally, but very strongly saying, I'm not sure the three is buildable. That that might be enough to give you pause to really reevaluate that. I think the combination of the letter, the town's engineer, and the discussion tonight on a couple of the big topics, the depth of the infiltration basin, the height of the wall, what's really being sent into the non-disturbance zone and the actual unknown section of the tributary. Those are at least four things that I think I've heard the board show hesitation. And this unwillingness to call it reasonable but compliant suggests to me a real doubt. Combined with you can put the peer board, I, I would only offer the suggestion that this is a moment to really gut check yourselves if you really are doubting, rethink the vote on three. And I, I'm not saying that would be a reasonable one, but if the chairman would accept it, I think you're, and check me on this, Laura, you could move for reconsideration and, and allow yourselves that, that opportunity if you want to. Because you've gotten new information, that's particularly valid when new stuff's been brought there. So I just wanna offer that thought, having exactly, knowing exactly how hard it is, and found myself almost saying what you said, Bob. So respecting fully the point you, Eric, Richard, you've all made, you know, really respect kind of how you end up in that space, but giving credit to Eric for, I think, finding the willingness to hear from the peer board as well.
The only thing I would add is reasonable was my word.
Right, correct.
Not, not their word, my word.
And then that, that sort of that compliant, reasonable, sort of teeter totter suggests how hesitant everybody is. So thanks for letting me say that, though.
Always a pleasure, Mark.
Could I add one other comment?
Sure.
You know, if, if the benchmark is set at three homes as a maximum, it's very rare that anything less than that is approved and, and at the end of the story. And it puts a huge burden on the butters and the community to mitigate every fine detail of how this project will unfold. And it's, and as everyone in this room knows, it's time-consuming and you're up late at night coming to these hearings time after time. And I would just say, I can't reiterate more, emphasize enough what Mark just said. Your decision is a huge decision, three or two homes. And it really does gauge what, how this project will unfold from here on in. If it's, if it's not changed back to two homes, then there's a lost battle there, really. As, as a, as someone who cares about the quality and the sufficiency of our drinking water, I, it's a lost battle. And I, and I know that Water Resources wouldn't have given enough personnel to be here at so many hearings and be as vocal and as technical and as eloquent if it wasn't serious. And I just find this is a defining moment. And, and it, with our respect to Mr. Taylor, don't be cavalier about how this can be pulled back at the next hearing. It really, once this is, it's the cat out of the bag, it's two homes or it's three from tonight forward. And I feel strongly that it would be impossible to go back to two homes if, if this decision is rescinded. And, and Bill and, and people that worked hard to put this letter together, who were not compensated for their time, had a lot of technical arguments. I, I was amazed at how many technical arguments, there were three maybe, I think eight, that were excused because they didn't apply. The others are still unresolved, they're still unresolved. And I didn't hear a confident conclusion that the environment should be protected with changes. So we can continue this mitigating from hearing to hearing and people speaking out. I will still come, I will be here, I will speak out. But I would hope that you could dig deep and, and believe your convictions, like Mark said. If you're uneasy about it, it should be no.
Thank you.
Chris Vanlonde, Old Oak and Wicker Road, I actually live on the other side of town, I'm not in Butter, but I've been involved for just a few years. And I think the onus is, are you going to improve the plan as is? You can say, we could do this, we could do that, but it is really what it is. It's what the original plan is what's presented. And I just see all over town where people are just making, you know, concessions to builders and we're incrementally really losing a lot of our wetland protection. And one house isn't, you know, a huge project, but it's one house here, one house there. It's really incrementally affecting our water quality.
Good thinking. Steven?
Yeah, Stephen Yorklin. I've done most of the flexible open spaces in town since the bylaw was created. And I've been involved in the conventional density sketch plan. Never in my twenty-five years of doing this have I seen a conventional density sketch plan scrutinized as much as this little three-lot one. But this woman made a comment that you have to go back to the two-lot plan. Just for the record, there never was a two-lot plan. This was a three-lot subdivision. And what the board, I believe, is charged with, you've, four of you have committed that this can be constructed as a three-lot subdivision. The purpose of the conventional density sketch plan is to take that three-lot subdivision that you might not like, Eric. You might not like it, but you have the ability under the flexible open space to make it much better. And that's the purpose of the flexible open space. That's why as a developer, and, and most of the guys in town that are developing, have done flexible open space developments. That's why as a developer, and, and most of the guys in town that are developing have done flexible open space developments for the purpose of protecting the water supply and protecting the wetlands and pulling these projects out of, in many cases, out of the 100-foot buffer zone, where we're allowed to go up to the 50. But by you approving the flexible open space, we can pull those back. We can pull that road further back away from that 150-foot non-disturbance zone. I mean, I heard people mentioning the benefits indirectly of what you'll have the ability to do when this becomes a flexible, a flexible open space. And your concerns about being right on the 150 foot. And I haven't even really reviewed the plan, but I'm assuming the road is coming further away from that 150 when it's a flexible open space. Great job. Great job. That's the purpose of the bylaw. I just hope the board looks at what the purpose of the bylaw is and moves forward with it. But in, in due deference to everybody, you should vote whether it's three lots or it's two lots. Get it done and let these guys move on with it. But they should end that. And everybody should understand, if it's going to be three, let them try to do the best job they can with those three. But let the board make that determination. I think you got all the information you need as far as the conventional density sketch plan is concerned.
The board has already made the.
But you need to determine whether you're going to change that vote or not change it. That's what I understand the audience is looking for. Whether you're going to go to a two lot and rescind your decision or whether you'll stand by the decision that it's a three lot plan.
Thank you. Pleasure. The board?
Is it appropriate that we vote or should we just confirm a vote that we've already taken?
I think we have a consensus to go forward with what we need.
I certainly would, would agree with that opinion or position.
Stephen, you agree to go forward with the flexible?
Yes, I, I would not vote to rescind our, our former approval.
I assume you're in the same position, Bob?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes, I would stay with our previous decision.
Eric, your position is unchanged?
My position is unchanged, but we're going to go forward with the flexible open space.
My position is unchanged.
Now it is 20 minutes to 10. We are over our time. I appreciate your patience. I appreciate your input. Appreciate the time that you've spent. I, I can tell you how many hours I've spent on this thing.
A good amount.
Fair amount. But if I didn't care, I wouldn't do it. I think what we need to do is, we can do a couple of things. If you want, you could spend maybe five minutes or 10 minutes, just highlight the, the flexible open space. So we'll have that so that we can look at it. And then look to reschedule to our next meeting or next available meeting, you'd be ready for it. If that's agreeable? Is that agreeable with the board?
Yeah.
Yeah. Highlight only. I mean, I really want to approach this fresh and clean at our next, at our next meeting.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's 30,000 feet. Not, not an infinite detail and save your nitrogen for later.
So with the, with the flexible open space, as you see it presented here, what we're able to do is reduce the length of the roadway and we've cut down our lot sizes. We still have the three lot spots, one, two, and three. Everything with this road, we've had public utilities out to Countryway, onsite septic systems. The lots range in size between 14,000 and 25,000 square feet. The big benefit of the flexible open space is the perpetual open space. All of the wetlands on the site, all of the tributary area, all of the 100-foot, there are 50-foot buffer zone here. Majority of the 150-foot non-disturbance zone, that's all included within this perpetual open space or included within the limit of work at the drainage parcel. The numbers here speak for themselves. In developing this site, we looked at two things. We looked at low-impact development characteristics.
Excuse me. Just, you just ran over something that I didn't quite get. You said the majority of the 150-foot?
There's a piece of 150 that comes, actually touches, it touches the lot line right there, at the, at the drainage basin. This is all within the perpetual open space. Touches the lot, touches the lot line.
Is there any reason for it to be in the lots at all?
The drainage parcel. I'm going to change that out of the drainage parcel.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to understand what you've, I, I thought it was all going to be preserved, so.
150-foot is preserved all through here. That's the limit of work. And then it cuts right here, right along the drainage parcel, right in that back corner of it.
That might be a good modification to make. If none of it is in any individual homeowner's lot. So I'm, I'm not going to extend my lawn. I'm not going to start.
My bad, bitten core. I think that's what we were putting in earlier.
Right.
Volleyball.
Volleyball.
My play structure. Correct.
So none of that is included on any of the individual lots. Another thing that we're going to be adding to the plan, the board had expressed potential for at the last meeting, was installation of a stone wall or split rail fence to demarcate that zone as well. And that will be on the, the next round of plans here for the next meeting. In developing the site, you know, the town, looking at low-impact development, you can have sprawl by complying with conventional zoning or you can do cluster zoning such as this. And you'll see that with an ortho photo of this site, this mimics the surrounding houses. What you'll see is our property here overlay. We have a house up front, a house in the middle, a house in the back. It's almost identical to the adjacent property with a house in the front, a house in the middle, and a house in the back. And it's a lot less dense than directly across the street where you have eight houses on a conventional cul-de-sac. It's fitting with the neighborhood that we're proposing. We've asked for a waiver from the planning board rules and regs to reduce the pavement width down from the pole 24-foot wide down to 16 feet wide, which is acceptable with the fire department for access. And that allows us to reduce the impervious surfaces on the site. We've also reduced land alteration with the open space plan. We're not having to have the larger lot sizes. In our homeowners association, we've proposed bedroom restrictions. On the site here, probably the largest producer of nitrogen, which is what the water resource committee is looking at, is wastewater. So we've reduced, we've provided for four bedrooms in each of the lots. Under a conventional plan, there's no restriction on bedroom size. So we provide, propose that in the homeowners association. This site, the location of it, easy access to transportation, the new bike path that's going in, it's within a mile of 3A. We have transportation down the street, the Green Bush line, and we're maintaining the drainage patterns. The overall drainage scenario of this site, everything flowing to the reservoir, we're not taking that stormwater and changing to another subcatchment. It's all being kept in the same tributary areas. There's no loss for the stormwater recharge. The Water Resource Study Committee in 2004 published a report recommending some of the practice that we have here. They recommend the use of dry wells. They recommend the use of sedimentation controls, construction stabilized entrances, retirement of lawn surfaces within the buffer. As shown on the existing conditions plan, you'll note a lot of this upper portion of the site was maintained as lawn for the house that was here. Now it's all going to be retired. It's not going to be lawn surface. It's not going to be getting a fertilizer. Again, a large nitrogen producer for the water resource committee. Topsoil typically four inches thick. We've specified six inches thick throughout the site. Again, a water conservation measure. All of these were incorporated into the plans and they're all recommendations for development within WRPD as outlined in the Water Resource Committee, Committee Report. The numbers themselves, with the flexible open space, you'll note that the distance between our houses is much larger. Conventional density, we had 61 feet between the houses with our layout. You know, again, mimicking the surrounding properties, we have more room between our houses, more privacy with these lots. The distance to wetlands from the houses, we have 188 with the conventional. Now our, our closest house is 215 feet away from a jurisdictional wetland. This plan here does not require any approval with the Conservation Commission because all work is outside of the 100-foot wetland buffer zone. Traditionally, you're allowed to work right up to the 50-foot buffer, which is this dashed line. All of our work, again, is outside of that 100-foot buffer zone. Nitrogen loading on this site, we're down at around 5.2 parts per million. The drinking water standard by the EPA is at 10 parts per million. So the downstream nitrogen here complies with EPA drinking water standards. Impervious associated with the road, we're going from 22,000 to 11,000 square feet. It's approximately 50% less impervious surface with this type of layout. That's my two-minute overview.
And a good two-minute overview of this.
Thank you.
Because I think we're going to spend a lot of time going into this one, I think.
Yeah.
Bob?
Directed to Mr. Morrison and I guess perhaps to the Water Resource Commission as well. One of the things that you've said has a benefit to the town is the preservation of this open space. I, I take, I take the point that was made in several of these correspondences that there's, there's no way that open space would not be preserved no matter what. You're not creating a preserved open space that would otherwise not be there, not accrue to the town. Which is fine. I don't mean to make that as a criticism. What I'm saying is that we need to discuss, and I'm sure we will, what additional benefits might be provided that would sort of cover that, that aspect of the intent of the flexible open space development bylaw. So we all might be thinking about what those might be.
Yeah.
That, that area there, it's all outside of that 150-foot. That'll be.
Okay.
Again. Yep.
Okay.
Super.
Great.
Now we need time to continue. What's our schedule look like?
We have, we had planned to continue this to August 22nd at 8:30. If that's where you're thinking, you would be ready to come back or, we do have some space there. I think on September 12th, we have some, we, we, we own room on September 12th.
So August 22nd?
Yeah.
8:30?
Yeah.
And how much time?
How much time will we have? I think we'll have like an hour and a half. Yeah, but that's, there's a lot of time.
The rest of the night.
One morning, yeah.
I like the rest of the night.
Can I ask a stupid question that I should know? Is there sewer on Countryway?
No.
I don't think so, no.
Is there what?
Sewer.
Further down, there's a pump station, but.
I just wondered if there was, as part of the public benefits, is there any way that could mitigate the nitrogen runoff by connecting to the sewer instead, instead of having septic? So that's off the table?
Pretty much, no.
Well, so off the question, off the table till the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, just a question on, as we go forward, will you be able to provide a construction plan as opposed to just a, a final plan here? Because I'm thinking about what John had to say and I think it would be great if you had a way to demonstrate how construction will happen and perhaps review it with the Water Resources Commission.
Yes. One of, one of the things that we've included is a full narrative on how the site, including all of the construction is going to be performed. It outlines all the inspections, the clearing of the site, the erosion controls. And I'd be glad to meet with John if you want and we can fully go over it. That was included in the plan set.
Do we include that?
Yep.
Include that.
Yeah, I, I think there's some, there's some concerns about some of that and how it's all going to come together.
Yeah, I wouldn't doubt it.
I need a motion for a continuance?
Yep.
Oh, no. We've got to read the motion.
And before I do this, I just want to go on record that I think, to kind of reiterate what Bob said, is that the public amenities for this is going to have to go far and beyond, I think, a normal quantity because of the, the background. So we're really going to have to see the public benefits to the town of Situate. That's, I'd like to go on record by saying that.
I didn't quite say that, but that's.
Yeah, so I don't want to put word in your, words in your mouth, but just to, that's the way I feel. So anyway, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearings for the definitive subdivision plan, flexible open space, special permit, and scenic road, public shade tree hearing for White Ash Farm Lane at 305 Countryway until August 22nd, 2013 at 8:30 PM?
Have a second?
Oh, wait a minute. That's not the end of it, though, isn't it?
Do I have to do two, two different ones?
Well, yeah, you, you didn't even have to do that as two. You, you just, just say and to continue.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the, and also the, to continue the time for the action for the definitive subdivision plan, flexible open space, special permit, and scenic road, public shade tree hearing for White Ash Farm Lane, Fred's Way at 305 Countryway until October 18th, 2013.
Now, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a second for Bob's motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are returned. Thanks, Stephen.
What's that?
I said thank you.
Thank me?
Well, your summary allowed me.
Oh, I agree.
We all had, we all had a summary, but we just needed to, to frame it.
Well done.
I would rather convictions.
Do I like it?
Because I really, I was so.
Yeah, I'm with you there.
Still feel like, this is where it's really hard. I, I respect Bob and Bill so much, but I also respect Mark.
What are the regulations saying?
At least from my perspective, I think we have a lot more legal.
You know, it's a light bulb. It's either yes or it's no.
And I still feel, despite what she said, that we could reduce. Maybe I'm being Pollyannaish.
I, I, I think, I think you're right. I think we can reduce it from three to two if we choose to. What I'm concerned about is the idea of.
They can try to jam it in.
Creating this false sense of what we're going to do or how we're going to do it.
Yeah, that's why, you know, Steve New Yorklin kind of, I, I got what he was saying too. It was like, you know, they're spending all this money, let's just get it over with. That's why I was like, you know.
And, and part of the way I look at it is my.